You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. Hope you all enjoyed your summer. The September 11th, 2024 meeting of the RTM is called to order at 8:06 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of limitations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we proceed, I'd like to call for a moment of silence in commemoration of the events of September 11, 2001. Mr. Toohill, will you call the roll?
Representative Adams.
Here.
Representative Edelman.
Here.
Representative Alphon.
Here.
Representative Amore.
Here.
Representative Anderson.
Here.
Representative Black. Absent. Representative Bonnenberger.
Here.
Representative Brooks.
Present in conference.
Representative Dayhill.
Here.
Representative Everson.
Here.
Representative Greenberg.
Here.
Representative Hartwell.
Here.
Representative Henshaw.
Here.
Representative Hines.
Here.
Representative Ingraham.
Here.
Representative Keefe. Absent. Representative Leach.
Here.
Representative Larson. Absent. Representative LaFredo. Absent. Representative Mareska.
Here.
Representative McCall. Absent. Representative McCormick. Absent. Representative Nuppani. Absent. Representative Papalizio.
Here.
Representative Sharkey. Absent. Representative Schresta. Absent. Representative Sumro.
Here.
Representative Toohill's present. Representative Verdaram.
Here.
And Representative Waterman.
Here.
Do you have a quorum, Madam Moderator?
Thank you very much. Representatives McCall and Larson may comment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I am in receipt of no communications reports or petitions, so we can... Oh, sorry. I have a... Number four. Yes.
Ex officios, please. Thank you.
Oh, the ex officios. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Yes, okay, so I see present, we have the first selectman with us, Jamie Cosgrove. We have selectman Angie Higgins. And we have town clerk Arpin. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Let's move on to item four. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 10th, 2024 meeting?
Madam Moderator?
Yes, sir. Representative...
Yes, I would like to make a minor modification to the minutes.
Okay.
If possible, on item 13, this was to hear the parliamentarians review of Greg Gerolm and his correspondence to the RTM dated June 6, 2024. In the second sentence, it says, "He was concerned that members of the public..." I'd like to change that to "Mr. Gerolm's concern," just to not confuse it with myself.
Okay.
And then, the last sentence, it says, "He stated that he recommended that the RTM moderator and the committee chairs..." I would like that there, that he is me.
Yeah.
And I would like the second "he" to be changed to the Rules and Ordinance Committee. He stated that the Rules and Ordinance Committee recommended the RTM moderator, because that was an actual action of the committee, not myself.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so will we accept the amendment to the minutes? Do I have a motion to accept that amendment?
So moved.
Any... Do we have a second? Right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so then we need a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'm going to abstain, as I was the president of the committee.
Okay.
Do you have a...
It's a... Okay. Mr. Henshaw, you said you would... You're moving?
I'd make the motion.
Okay.
Peter. I'll second.
Second? Okay.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Tracy.
Tracy, okay, thank you.
All in favor of approving the minutes from July 10th as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Okay, the minutes are approved.
Thank you, thank you.
And, one more time, I have not received any communications reports or petitions, so we can move on. Item six, to consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance to change the position of town clerk from an elected position to an appointed one. This is the purview of rules and ordinances, so Mr. Henshaw, will you give the report?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Since the language of this proposed ordinance had not been published five days prior to the July 10th meeting of the RTM, we voted in that meeting to hold this item over until the next meeting, which is today. The item was heard by the Rules and Ordinance Committee on July 2nd and unanimously approved for referral to the RTM, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to approve. Any discussion by the RTM? Questions? Representative Bonnenberger.
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. I realize this might come across as a little bit of inside baseball politics, but I thought a lot about it, and while I am going to vote to, in support of this measure, I did want to voice my concerns about the general trend in America, in small towns, in states, and at national level, of slowly professionalizing and institutionalizing democratically elected positions. This to me seems like... I've heard the arguments for it. It's... Everybody that I've talked to has given clear and reasonable explanations for why this is in the town's best interest, why this is in our best interests. Same thing with the tax collector. It makes a lot of sense to me. But at the same time, I feel like we've lost the tax collector. We're losing, and I, you know, as a democratic process, we're losing the town clerk. And I know there are towns out there that have hired CEOs to manage their town. That's the next step, right? A town manager. And a lot of those arguments are the same for that. It's that it's a very difficult position, it's not particularly well compensated. RTM members, we're all volunteering our time here, you know? It's a massive investment of time. So I just wanted to sort of stamp my foot and say, I'm happy to, you know, the town clerk, it makes sense, tax collector makes sense, but I hope we're drawing a line with the selectman and the first selectman, and that that remains a democratically elected position for our town, and that we keep our democracy strong. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Bonnenberger. You're on the record. Okay, any other comments or questions before we put this to a vote? Anyone? Okay.
Madam Moderator?
No. Oh, sorry.
I rise in, again, for this ordinance, but I'm kind of excited that the RTM is fixing something that the RTM messed up about 20 years ago, when they had this decided, ready to go, and whatever happened. I heard all the stories, you know, it was political, but it was between both parties doing stuff, so I'm glad to see these both these positions finally getting done.
Okay. And now you are on the record. Thank you. Mr. Toohill?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. I would like our town clerk, Lisa Arpin, to come forward and explain to us, how many years did it take you to get your certification? And how many times have you gone through the certification? I mean, would you just explain, you know, the process? So you can't just, you can't just elect, you know, a town clerk for two years. It takes longer than that to get certified, right?
So, thank you for this opportunity, and to you, Adrian, I respect your comments. But honestly, on behalf of the interest of the town, I'm going to say to Frank's comments that in my 11 years, it's taken me those years to attain all of my certifications. I kind of tell my friends, I now have a PhD in town clerking. Constant, and I'm grateful to the town for the professional development opportunities that I've had to do so. This proposed ordinance before you is not about Lisa Arpin. It's completely not about me, it's about the town, and it's rather about securing cohesiveness, knowledge, and seamless synergy in the team that I've created in the town clerk's office. The town clerk's office is undeniably the 4-1-1 of the town. We can elect someone off the streets, so to speak, which I was elected off the streets, and thankfully, I've stepped up to the challenge. Passing this ordinance also brings upward mobility to my staff members, who have not had that opportunity to advance to another level. So there's three full-time members, and there's two union steps, but the higher step is only one position, and if that position is filled by someone who is stable and staying there, the two steps below that have no place else to go. I've hired someone who got stolen right out from under me to go to the assessor's office, because the assessor is not elected. So he, he looked at my position, saying, "I can't have that position. I don't want to go door-to-door. I don't want to be elected. I want to start a family. I want stability. I can't have that here." So I lost a good employee. We're not really thinking beyond the level of, okay, this is no longer going to be an elected position. We have to look inwardly to what is the best for the town and the team in the town clerk's office. So, the magnitude and the scope of the work is not for the faint of heart. We really pivot with each and every phone call and each and every person that comes into our office. It's not that we're... And not to diminish tax collecting or the building officials or planning and zoning, but it's not just one task that we're handling. Each and every time that we handle a phone call or someone coming into the office, it's a different, it's a different statutory requirement or something that is driven by the town code. So, I hope you pass this tonight. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. There's a question for...
No.
No?
I'm going to make a second.
Okay. Not for...
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, thanks. Thank you for this opportunity. Any questions, Lisa? No? Okay. Representative Hartwell?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I rise also in support of this motion. I think that this is exactly what we should be doing. When I came to Branford and found that the tax collector and the clerk of the town were elected as opposed to appointed, I was actually quite surprised, because that was not the way I was experienced it. And it seems to me that a job like the town clerk, like the tax collector, is one that requires an amazing amount of training, experience, competency, and it is truly an administrative job, and therefore, in my mind, belongs directly in the administration, where people can be hired and judged by standards that apply across the state. And so, I actually think that this is exactly the right way to go. I think, in my own mind, that positions that require policy development, policy initiation, where the people of the town are directly impacted by whatever change wants to be made, those positions should be elected. And so, I think there's actually some work that we could be doing in this town as well. A lot of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwell. Are there any other questions or comments before we open to a vote? Oh, yes. Representative Anderson.
The mic's right in front of you.
I'd just like to say thank you to Lisa for every two years fighting for her job. She didn't have to go get elected, but she fought for that job because she believed in the town, and she had the knowledge to do the job. So for 11 years, you sacrificed to fight for your job, and you didn't go out and get the big CEO job that you could get. Like was said, CEOs are getting hired to be town planners. You didn't do that. You stayed, you stuck with us, and you developed your own knowledge for the job that we all benefit from. So I thank you for those years.
Thank you, Representative Anderson. Anyone else? Okay, all in favor of...
I'll call the...
Oh, it's an ordinance.
Yep.
Right? We'll call it, we'll call it.
Okay.
Okay. We'll call to... A vote yes is to create an ordinance to change the position of town clerk from an elected position to an appointed one.
Representative Adams.
Aye.
Representative Edelman.
Yes.
Representative Alphon.
Yes.
Representative Amore. Oh, I'm sorry, you don't vote. Representative Anderson.
Yes.
Representative Bonnenberger.
Yes.
Representative Brooks.
Yes.
Representative Dayhill.
Yes.
Representative Everson.
Yes.
Representative Greenberg.
Yes.
Representative Hartwell. Yes. I see that Representative Alex Larson has come in the room. Representative Henshaw.
Yes.
Representative Hines.
Yes.
Representative Ingraham.
Yes.
Representative Leach.
Yes.
Representative Larson. Is the town clerk issue to make it appointed rather than elected? Would you like to pass?
Yeah, I'll abstain.
Abstain.
You abstain?
You're going to abstain, or are you going to pass?
Can you repeat? Sorry.
Do you want to pass, and we'll come back?
Yeah, can you get...
Okay. Representative Mareska.
Yes.
Representative Papalizio.
Yes.
Representative Sumro.
Yes.
Representative Toohill votes yes. Representative Verdaram.
Yes.
Representative Waterman.
Yes.
And then returning to Representative Larson. He votes yes.
Okay.
The motion passes.
Motion passes? Congratulations. Okay, item seven, to consider and if appropriate...
Some things take a while, Madam Moderator.
To consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance protecting licensed home daycare providers from restrictive HOA bylaws. Again, this went to RNO. Mr. Henshaw.
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. This item was referred to rules and ordinances in the previous session in July. Since the committee has not met since the previous session, I ask that the RTM re-refer this item, and I put that in the form of a motion. And also, I'd just like to add that as a follow-up, I have asked the town council for an opinion on whether this actually can be addressed through ordinance before we spend our time actually discussing it.
So we have a motion to re-refer item seven back to RNO. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I second that.
He put it in the form of, he did a committee report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So the item seven is re-referred. Item eight, to consider and if appropriate, approve a transfer request from planning and zoning for fiscal '24 from travel, $850 to advertising, printing, and binding for $850. Mr. Henshaw.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This item was not heard in committee, and therefore, I would ask that we 441 this item to be able to act on it tonight, and I do have additional information to relate to the RTM.
Are you moving to suspend Rule 441?
First.
I need a second. Representative Ingraham, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor of suspending Rule 441 to take up this matter? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion carries. Go ahead, Mr. Henshaw.
So, this is a very small transfer, obviously, and I think it's in enough accounts at year end. However, I did ask the town planner, Harry Smith, to give me a bit of background on it just for the sake of the RTM understanding. In his comments to me through email, the overrun in the advertising, printing, and binding account was due to an increased, was due to, I think, an increased expenditure on state law required legal ads in the local newspapers, The Sound and the New Haven Register. Unexpected number, complexity, et cetera, of applications this past fiscal year, which are charged to this account. The cost of placing ads in the New Haven Register is much higher. We have sometimes had to use it, though, to accommodate the state law requirements, required timing of the ads. I requested and received an additional $1,500 increase in this account for this current fiscal year, so hopefully, a line item transfer to this account will not be needed at the end of the current year. And that was the end of this correspondence on the issue, so I would make a motion to approve this transfer.
I'll second it.
Is it second? Any discuss...
That was Representative Papalizio's second.
Okay. Any discussion, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, we'll have a vote to authorize the transfer of planning and zoning of $850. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No, the motion carries. Okay. On to item nine, to consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance to establish a harbor management commission pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 22A to section 113K. Once again, Mr. Henshaw.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Again, a motion to re-refer this item was adopted in the July 10th session of the RTM. Since the committee has not met since that session, I would ask that the RTM, again, re-refer this item, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. The committee chair gives a committee report. We don't need a second. All in favor of...
Madam Moderator?
Yeah?
There wasn't a committee meeting.
Oh, that's right.
That's why I said it.
All right, we need a second.
Second.
Okay, this is seconded. Okay, any discussion or comments before we vote to re-refer? Okay. All in favor of referring, re-referring item eight, nine to the next RNO committee meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. To consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance which will encode reasonable restrictions on short-term rentals in Branford. Mr. Henshaw.
Again, thank you, Madam Moderator. Again, as in the previous item, a motion on the July 10th session of the RTM was made to re-refer this item, and the committee has not met since that time, so I would ask that the RTM, again, re-refer this item. And before we vote on that, I just wanted to make a note that, I think I've mentioned in a previous meeting, that the committee, the Rules and Ordinance Committee, has generated a survey for the committee to assess opinion on this topic, and that survey is going to be active until October 10th, and it is available, if you go to the town website, you can find it at the top of the homepage, right at the very top, there's a link to both the QR code and the hotlink to the survey itself, so I hope that you will take the survey yourself and also transmit this to as many people as possible to get them to participate. We have, this will be also in The Sound, it's been published in a variety of places, but as many people as we can get to take part in the survey, the better the information will be that we act upon. Thank you.
So you...
So the motion is to re-refer.
The motion is to re-refer. You need a second?
Out.
I don't know which one, not at first.
Trish Anderson.
Okay, we have a second? All right. Any discussion on the motion to re-refer this to RNO?
I'm next.
No discussions? Okay, all in favor of re-referring item 10? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item carries. Okay, you're off your feet, Mr. Henshaw. Number 11, to consider and if appropriate, approve a request from Evgenia Pereskaya, CEO of Super Cool Metals for the town of Branford, to reconsider the imposition of property tax on their manufacturing equipment for this year, and to ask the RTM to approve a request for an exemption on the 2023 grant list as provided for in general statutes, section 12-94E. This goes to, went to Administrative Services. Mr. Edelman, will you take this up?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. There was a lengthy presentation from the employer, it's a very substantive event, with the first selectman Cosgrove, and explicit issue-focused questioning by the committee on this issue. We looked at the statutory criteria that control whether this exemption should be granted, and we looked at the issue of whether Super Cool Metals seeking this exemption, getting this exemption, would provide a net benefit to an economic development of Branford. The company owner was quiet at length regarding this inquiry. I believe the committee was satisfied now that Super Cool Metals had reached the end of their research and development stage, and would soon be embarking on production, on manufacturing, and sales of a very unique product that produces custom high-performance components. It was also noted, while the company size is small, it is an active and advanced bio tech company in town, part of the industry that Branford is trying to recruit and maintain, and this company certainly adds to our existing cluster of that bio tech industry. The committee was concerned about the slippery slope effect, lack of better terminology about this exemption granted to this young lady, what would happen in the future, what would happen in the future with other companies coming for the town. There's a 25% penalty that is imposed for missing the initial deadline for the exemption, which is not waived. So, I believe that there's statutory criteria that would allow the exemption to be had if it was timely, so in fact, the town is actually receiving a financial benefit due to its tardiness that they would not have received had it filed for prime. So nobody, no other companies have really any incentive to miss the benefit, missing the time period to drop the exemption that come before the town, so we didn't find that a persuasive argument at all regarding opening up floodgates for the towns to come in and ask for the exemption. I have to be honest with you, initially, I think some members of the committee expressed the desire to not grant this exemption, but was fully satisfied by both the business owner and, again, some very substantive by first selectman Cosgrove, which was appreciated. And as such, we voted 5 to nothing at our September 3, 2024 meeting, and I would put that forward as a motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edelman. We have a committee report as a motion. Are there any comments or questions? Yes, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, Madam Moderator. I went through a tour of this facility, and I found it to be a very interesting situation. I also went to the assessor's office to figure out, because I too didn't want to set a precedence of exemptions. And I learned that all manufacturing equipment is tax exempt, whether you are a small startup or a huge manufacturer doing 10,000, 200 a day, it doesn't matter. So this is what makes Branford friendly to the manufacturing industry. I also discovered that the assessor's office is forthcoming, they send... I also discovered that the assessor's office is forthcoming, they send the information out to these companies in September to say the deadline is November to file for this exemption. The assessor's office is also very willing to help these companies fill out these forms. They will come to your factory and to see what the, the equipment is, to see how it qualifies, so we are all in unison to make this the best place to do manufacturing. So, I, I fully approve this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tughill, and then Ms. Waterman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. At this time, I have a couple of questions for the CEO. Would she please come up to the front table, please? Good evening, and it's great to see you again.
Good to see you too.
And also, would you please introduce yourself?
My name is Evgenia Pikarska. I'm the CEO of Super Cool Metals. We are based in Branford, Connecticut, and we are a manufacturer, a very small manufacturing company, developing new processes to produce high-performance parts for robotics, satellites, and other industrial applications.
Okay, okay, that's, that's great. So, my first question is, so you came to Branford in 2020, right? And you, you moved to Branford from Yale's Science Park, right? And so, from what you have said before on the tour, and also at the committee, you said that ever since 2020, your applications for this tax exemption have always been granted for personal property tax by the town of Branford, right?
Absolutely. Every year, we submitted this form for exemption on the manufacturing equipment, and we have received that exemption every year, except for the 2023, when we were late with submission because of staffing changes that led to kind of changes in our operating procedures, unfortunately, and so we were late submitting the request for exemption, and that's why we were not granted, and that's why we came to request it for 2023, so.
All right, that's very good. Thank you very much.
Representative Waterman? And are you querying?
Yeah.
No, okay, before you speak, does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Pekarskaya? Please say your last name again.
I know, it's very hard. Pikarskaya.
Pikarskaya.
Don't worry, it's a very hard name.
Any other questions?
This is P, this is P.
Thank you very much, then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Waterman?
I also had the pleasure of visiting Super Cool Metals with other representatives this Monday, and got a great tour of the really interesting and innovative tech operation here, but I would like to say also, as a bioscience business owner here in Branford, that I strongly support this motion, and also would like to make the point that the town needs to do as much as possible to support our biotech and technical businesses and manufacturing businesses here in Branford, and Branford has a long history of supporting tech, and I think the town can do more. I know from personal experience and from getting feedback from other businesses in town, that there has been issues in the past with the tax assessor, and being able to really help get the, these very, very important R and D tax breaks and manufacturing tax breaks to support the growth of these businesses, and I think it should be, it would be shortsighted not to support these businesses because, you know, we need to bring hiring people, training people, supporting other small businesses in town, so the overall benefit to the town for all of these technology companies is really, really large.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions before we open this up for a vote? Wait, yes? No? Yes? No? Okay. Just wanted to take the mic for a walk, okay. Okay, very good. Okay, since there are no further questions or comments, all in favor approving this request, the request from Evgenia Pekarskaya of Super Cool Metals for the, the exemption for her property tax. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Item 12.
Great, we're glad to have you in here, too. We're glad to have you in our town. Okay, let's move on to number 12. Item 12, to consider and if appropriate approve a transfer request from the assessor for fiscal '24 from appraisal services, $400, to dues and subscriptions for $400. Representative Adelman?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is a fairly simple request from the tax assessor to pay $400 dues and subscriptions to the bill, and the due on JB Tower and motor vehicle pricing, hoping to dues now to access motor vehicles throughout the state of Connecticut, Office of Policy Management. This is the last payment made to JB Tower, much to the satisfaction of the tax assessor in addition to the high cost of what they had previously been paying to some services at the September 3rd, 2024 Admin Services meeting, this was passed as well on fire without a vote, and now it is a support for that approach.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments for the committee? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay. Item 13, to consider and if appropriate approve a transfer request from the tax collector for fiscal '24 from regular wages and salaries, $1,160, and postage, $7,417, for a total of $8,577, to overtime, state fees and testing, and tax bill printing and processing, also for a total of $8,577. This was heard by Admin Services. Mr. Adelman?
Again, thank you, Madam Moderator. These transfers are from regular wages and salaries, as you said, to overtime to cover cleanup of the shortfall for 2024 for the grant list of 2324. Apparently, there was a planning issue, additional payroll, posting was not included, the additional transfer request. Additionally, the transfer posted, tax bill printing and processing, the result of additional correspondence made to all taxpayers by the office regarding the new lockbox payment address, as well as the closing date for the lockbox itself. Further, it is necessary as a result of tax payers having used, or using full payment envelope with the P O Box address, that's an ACH payment that people set up as their financial institution for online payments. Lastly, $150 for the posted transfers, payment PMB access for reporting and recording the linked with tax sales for motor vehicle registration and motor vehicle registration releases. Again, September 3rd, 2024 meeting, which was approved by Admin Services by a vote of five to nothing, and I would again put that forth in the matter of motion.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions for the committee? Hearing none, all in favor of this transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 14, to consider and if appropriate approve a transfer request from the First Electman for fiscal '24 as follows, from consulting, $1,875, and advertising, printing, and binding, $1,115, for a total of $2,990, to seasonal and part-time help, for a total of $2,990. Mr. Adelman?
Thank you once again, Madam Moderator. This is paid to seasonal and part-time help for the Economic Development Officer and the Light Officer. These monies have already been paid, this is simply a reconciliation for both offices. Again, September 3rd, 2024 meeting, this was passed to manus by a vote of five to nothing, and once again, I would put this forward as a motion.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any questions or comments for the committee? Hearing none, all in favor of this motion to, to transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the item carries. Okay. Number 16, to consider and if appropriate approve a transfer request from the Finance Director for fiscal '24 as follows. The Conservation Commission is, was that yours, Mr.? That's the one that you're gonna hear, here?
Yeah.
Yeah. It goes to RNO, it's, okay. To consider and if appropriate approve a transfer request from the Finance Director for fiscal '24 as follows, from others, for the Conservation Commission, from other supplies for $475, to board clerks, $215, memberships and meetings, $5, and purchase seven, services for $255, for the total amount of $475. This was not heard in committee?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This, this item was not heard in committee, so therefore I would ask to 441.
Okay. Need a motion to suspend Rule 441, so can we, can take this up on the?
Second.
And Josh, keep me through it. Okay, we have, any discussion on the motion to suspend? Oh, hearing none, all in favor of suspending Rule 441, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, okay, we are, we'll take this up on the floor. Mr. Henshaw?
Thank you. Adelman, since I was not aware of this, I did not ask for the explanation of the, of the transfer, I assume that this is year-end, we're keeping to move these funds. Request that the, the RTM actually approve this, if you have questions, perhaps the First Electman can answer, but it's a very small amount of transfer.
I'll cover it.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the transfer?
Gina just said he would cover it.
Okay. You got Peter's back, Gina? Okay, we have a motion to approve this transfer.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, item 16, to consider and if appropriate approve a transfer request from Parks and Recreation for fiscal '24 as follows, from contingency, $28,829, regular wages and salaries, $12,525, foot park splash pad, play that three times fast, $27,400, foot park base, basketball court renovations, $24,763, for a total of $93,517. Two, accumulated sick pay, $28,829, overtime, $12,175, uniform and clothing allowance, $350, and foot park playground for $52,163, again, for a total of $93,517. This was heard in Ways and Means. Mr. Henshaw? Nope, Mr. Hartwell.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, this was heard on September 4th at our regular meeting. This actually has three pieces. The contingency to accumulated sick pay comes because there was a lead maintenance man who retired in January, and so therefore he needed to collect the accumulated sick pay that was coming to him for contract. Regular wages and salaries into overtime, the Alex Pelusi, the Director of Parks and Rec, told us that this year they are running ahead of the number of events that they have done, so they're at 40 as opposed to 35 last year, so there's been additional work being done by Parks and Rec, and they needed to pay for that with some overtime. Finally, the foot park splash pad and the basketball court renovations both came in under budget, and so Director Pelusi wants to take that money and reassign it to further additions to foot park in terms of new playground stuff, and so the committee approved this four to oh, we had one member absent at that meeting, so I put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you very much. We have a committee motion. Are there any questions or comments for the committee? Hearing none, like a vote on approving this transfer of $93,517. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Number 17, to consider and if appropriate approve a transfer request from the First Electman for fiscal '24 as follows, Branford Cable TV, from contingency, $529, and other supplies, $92, for a total of $621, to seasonal and part-time help, $529, and subcontracting, $92, for a total of $621. Again, Ways and Means, Mr. Hartwell. I'm gonna do that all night.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This also was heard on the 4th of September. First Electman explained that the contingency money was to help pay for Henry Pond. I think we all know Henry, he actually wanders in and out during the meeting here, short, setting up and, and doing the, the broadcasting of this, both live and, and recorded, so I believe that that's an essential piece of, of the town government, the establishing the, the visual and recorded record of these meetings so that people can go back and see them later on at their own leisure. The $92 had to do with the time when Henry wasn't available, and therefore we needed to hire a contract person, I believe, was someone from Branford High School who runs the, the AV department there, so that's, we obviously approved this four to zero, and make it in the form of a motion.
Thank you very much. We have a committee motion. Any questions or comments for the committee? Hearing none, we'll have a vote, all in favor of this transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries. All right, number 18, to consider and if appropriate approve a transfer request from the Finance Director for fiscal '24, from property insurance, $23,000, to insurance damage for $23,000. Ways and Means, Mr. Hartwell, will you take that?
Well, thank you so much. Madam Moderator, the Finance Director of Finch came and presented to us at the meeting again on the 4th of September, essentially, in the self-insurance of the town, we, we are not paying as much for the insurance itself, but we're paying more for some of the things which need to be paid because we're self-insured, and so one offsets the other. So, again, we listened to this and approved it four to zero, and in the form of a motion.
Thank you very much. We have a committee motion. Any questions or comments for the committee? Hearing none, we'll have a vote, all in favor of this transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the item carries. Okay, to consider and if appropriate approve the following transfer request from Police Services for fiscal '24, from regular wages and salaries for $78,266, and purchase services $4,002, and equipment, $727, for a total of $82,995, two, school guards for $136, overtime, $72,344, professional development, $5,786, communications, $3,953, furniture and fixtures, $727, meal supplies, $49, for a total of $82,995. This was heard by Public Services? Mr. Bonnberger?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Public Services heard this on September 5th, and the, the biggest line item, but to a certain extent, all of these things, all of these items are impacted by the fluid nature of, of scheduling and police work in general. This is what it comes down to. The police chief explained that, you know, he's, he's been working hard to, to get scheduling formalized and locked in, and it's an impossible task. Anybody who's been in the military knows this, anybody who's been in police, law enforcement, the- Anybody who's been in police, law enforcement, the fire department knows this too, and we'll talk about that a little bit more with the fire department. You know, you get a full complement, somebody gets, somebody goes out sick. So a lot of that overtime, $72,000, is that. It's just, you know, juggling the schedule and making sure that Branford is fully protected. The committee heard a really extensive report. I think the chief talked for about a half an hour, and we voted unanimously to approve it without any reservations, and I put that in the form of a motion to approve.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bonnberger. We have a committee motion. Any questions or comments for the committee? Anybody? Okay. Hearing none, we'll have a vote. All in favor of approving this transfer of $82,995? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the item carries. Item 20. To consider and if appropriate, approve a transfer request from the Building Department for fiscal 24 as follows. From contingency, $14,724. From uniform and clothing allowance, $278. Office supplies, $387 for a total of $15,389. Two, regular wages and salaries for $5,761. Overtime, $237. Accumulated sick time, $2,711. And consulting services, $6,680 for an equivalent total of $15,389. This was heard by Public Services. Mr. Bonnberger, you have some things to say about this one, right?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And please bear with me, this is a little bit janky, and I hope I'm going to say this correctly. Public Services heard this item on September 5th and voted unanimously to re-refer based on a lack of information. Since that time, we have received the information, and I circulated it among the committee members. I am therefore moving to amend the committee report to request that the RTM approve the transfer. The background is as follows. The money is to deal with the consequences of an assistant building inspector unexpectedly leaving for a position in New Haven. Part of the money, the first three lines, were money owed to the departing individual, the former employee. Contractually, we were obligated to pay him for accumulated vacations and time. The last line, consulting services, was money paid to a part-time contractor who had to work full-time while they looked for a replacement. And I already put that in the form of a request that the RTM approve the transfer.
I don't, I'm a little, I don't know whether we need to vote to approve, to amend the committee report. Any parliamentarian, any thought on that?
I think we should vote to amend the committee.
Okay. All right, we need to vote to amend the committee report. All in favor of this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So we have an amended committee report, that's in the form of a motion. Do we have any other questions or comments for the committee on this transfer? Hearing none, we'll have a vote. All in favor of approving this transfer? No, we have a committee report. We have, we approved amended committee report. So now we have a committee report. Okay. Where were we? Okay. All in favor of approving this transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. We have, the motion carries. Okay. Item 21. To consider and if appropriate, approve a transfer request from Fire Services for fiscal 24. And before I go any further, I'm going to, we have to amend this, and as Mr. Twohill so charmingly said, there are two Scrivener errors. And so, Mr. Twohill, you have a motion to correct those errors.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. So if you look at item 21, under the two department at the bottom there, the first of the two Scrivener errors are that, if you see the account that's marked medical supplies, the total amount of dollars should be amended from 3732, and the correct amount is $1,756. That's the first. And then, item number two, the second Scrivener error, is we need to add an account, 101 42040-579300, furniture and fixtures, and that's in the amount of 3732. So I would put that in the form of a motion.
Do we have a second to?
Can I ask a point of information? Was this a change that came, that was made at the Board of Finance?
No, this was a line that was left out.
Oh, it was a line?
A line that was left out, and I'm still not sure how it got left out in the middle of that, but it didn't make it over into this one. So it's in the Board of Finance as this, but it's not on this one, so it was an error.
Thank you. And you saw it in Public Services.
Correct. Okay. We need, we have a motion to correct the item on the call. Do I have a second for that correction? Can we have a vote to correct the call? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The call will be read as corrected. Okay, and I will start up at the top. From regular wages and salaries, $94,800. Medic shift PT, part-time, I guess, $44,500. Overtime, $4,011. Overtime public events, $11,100. Vacation, $8,000. Holiday pay, $17,200. Special detail, $1,000. Educational incentive, $10,200. Stipends, $12,000. Professional development, $5,600. Employment testing, $3,448. Communications, $2,000. And hydrants, $9,000 for a total of $22,859. Two?
222.
I'm sorry.
2022.
What did I say? 2,000?
You said 22.
Sorry. Replace sick, $115,587. Accumulated sick pay, $27,224. Ambulance billing, $22,827. Other purchase services, $11,040. Purchase services, R and M?
Repair and maintenance.
Repair and maintenance, $21,129. Furniture and fixtures, $3,732. Medical supplies, $1,756. Memberships, conferences and meetings, $1,564. Transfer to Fund 203, $18,000 for an equivalent amount of $222,859. Mr. Bonnberger.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Public Services heard this on September 5th, September 5th in a regular meeting, and the explanation for replace sick and accumulated sick pay, the biggest items for personnel. Similarly to with the Police Department, the Fire Department is running on all pistons, and they're slightly understaffed. This is something that the RTM took up earlier this year, and we'll probably talk about next year as well, trying to bring the Fire Department up to full staff to make up for the lack of volunteer firemen in departments across the town. In addition to that, you also have repair and maintenance, purchase services, medical supplies, ambulance billing, which amounts to the equipment and vehicles. So we're running the people, we're also running vehicles and equipment a lot. We don't just cover down on Branford, we also cover down on surrounding areas as well. So the gist that I got, the chief of the Fire Department, Fire Chief gave another, we were there for about an hour listening to him and the police chief, gave a great report, very detailed, very exhaustive, and very thorough, I should say. And the long and the short of it is, they are working toward full manning, they're working toward, they're doing a great job with limited resources, and so we voted unanimously to approve this, and I put it in the form of a motion.
Thank you. We have a committee report? Are there any questions or comments for the committee on this transfer?
I'm sorry, I should add one thing, which is the transfer to Fund 203, which is a little bit confusing. There's a, the Fire Department got a grant from FEMA that required, basically, they got a big chunk of money, and they had to put 10% in to match that. That was, so Fund 203 is the matching fund that they had to pay for a big chunk of change they got from the federal government.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, no question, are there questions or comments for the committee? Hearing none, we'll have a vote on this transfer. All in favor of transferring this transfer in the amount of $222,859? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the item carries. Item 22. To consider and if appropriate, approve a transfer request for solid waste and recycling from fiscal 24, for fiscal 24 as follows. Regular wages and salaries, $10,557. To accumulated sick pay, $10,557. Mr. Bonnberger.
Public Services heard this in a regular meeting on September 5th. This was due to the retirement of a long-term employee of the transfer station, and it's essentially accounting housekeeping. They have enough to cover it in their regular wages and salaries. So the committee voted unanimously to approve it. I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. We have a committee motion. Any questions or comments for the committee? Representative Adams.
I just wanted to share the good news that the report about this came from the Sustainability Director, who is back again, Heather Gold. So, good news for the town.
Okay. Any other comments or questions before we take a vote? Hearing none, we'll have a vote on this. And all in favor of approving this transfer of $10,557? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the item carries. Okay. Last list of numbers, looks like. Anyway, item 23. To consider and if appropriate, approve a transfer request from general government buildings for fiscal 24 as follows. Regular wages and salaries, $4,363. Uniform and clothing allowance, $1,967. Purchase services, repairs and maintenance, $15,413. Office supplies, $800. Office supplies, $5,957. Oh, other supplies, sorry. Meal supplies, $557, $550. Equipment, $3,816. Furniture and fixtures, $250. Memberships, conferences and meetings, $1,200 for a total of $34,316. To overtime, $1,526. Utilities, $32,323. And fuel oil, $467 for an equivalent total of $34,316. Mr. Bonn.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Public Services met on September 5th in a regular meeting to discuss this. As everybody probably knows, utilities, the cost of electricity has gone up in Connecticut. It costs a lot of money to generate the electricity for all of our buildings, so this is the town experiencing the same pain that the consumer does in their home. We voted unanimously to approve this transfer, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion from the committee. Are there any questions or comments for the committee on this transfer? Hearing none, we'll have a vote. All in favor of the transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the item carries. Okay. Item 24. Any other business to come before the RTM? We have a couple of guests. Ms. Reiner, come up, please.
She used to be representative.
Yeah, I know.
Previous representative, that is true. And interesting to come back home almost, in different location. Sandra Reiners, I live in the 4th District, near Branford Point, and I would like to inform the RTM members, all of you, as well as the First Electman, and hope he carries that to the Board of Selectmen, and in fact, the entire Branford community, that Tweed Airport is holding a public community meeting with the airport's air traffic control manager. This meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 1st, at 6:30 PM at the Nathan Hale School, which is 480 Townsend Avenue in New Haven. That's the annex of New Haven, of course. This is really an important opportunity for us to learn why flight paths are the way they are. They impact enormously East Haven, the annex of New Haven, the immediate surrounding communities. They also impact Branford greatly. I'm sure you all have observed over the last two and a half years, and particularly of late, the increase in volume of flights. And very interestingly, depending upon wind direction, either most of the departures or alternatively, most of the arrivals fly over Branford. Why do they fly over Branford? This is a question that I think all of us have an interest in hearing answers about, and this really is an opportunity to learn what FAA limits, what rules, what application they have, and why are they flying so enormously to great number over Branford. So I encourage you all to attend. I encourage you to bring your questions, hear their responses. I look forward to seeing you there, Tuesday, October 1st, 6:30 PM, Nathan Hale School. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Absolutely.
Anybody have any questions for Sandra? Thank you very much. Is that you, Casey? No.
Can I comment on that, the past question? I love a Velo flying over my house every day, just to let you know. It's the best thing. I flew over 100 flights already, and it's the best thing I've ever seen come to our area. I understand the concerns, but it's time for this airport to be built. Okay. So I'm here because I brought up a concern that I brought to the Board of Selectmen, and let me address it. I'm J.C. Wyatt, 1st District, been a longtime resident here in Branford. I have a little timeline to share with you. I am trying to put a craft fair inside the old Canoe Brook Center here in Branford. It's been empty for a long time, and I thought it would be a great use to bring a holiday or craft fair to the event. It actually started with an idea I came up with back in October of 2023. I brought it to a couple people. Couple of people suggested me to go to talk to Jamie Cosgrove. I did. We talked many things about, the building's empty, it needs a lot of work, so I review back. I have created a nonprofit for our town of Branford to preserve and protect buildings, to research and see what we can do to keep the buildings that we once had instead of keep demolishing them. So I discussed this with them, maybe we could put the nonprofit in there, we can put a historical museum, we could do many different things, find the funding to rebuild the building if it does. And I understand it is a town building, and I am a nonprofit business owner in Branford, and I wasn't looking for a profit, I was looking to utilize a indoor for a winter event and can be held on the town green. And again, it was back in 2023, and I did meet with Jamie, we discussed it, he was absolutely open to the suggestions, gave me ideas, he brought, you know, we should put a PDF together to see what we can do about the project, and basically it became crickets. But actually, Baca was able to use the old post office across on Monowee Street for their own little holiday fair in for their own little holiday fair in November. So another organization in town was able to come. And I don't know the process, but they did hold the same idea that I came up literally three weeks later, talking to Angie Higgins, Jamie Cosgrove, and a couple of representatives in our town. So I met on, during the summer, and then I also met with him on August seventh. I provided a letter and information of how and what benefit would be great to do something in our town of Branford, to create another fair, something that is, utilize a building for its great use. And it's just vacant. So to me, I didn't want to like sidetrack Jamie. I didn't want to go behind his back. I did go to the board meeting, suggested it again. And nothing was voted on, other than I was basically said, we're not going to vote on it. And that's where we are. Talked to another representative in the room and suggested that I sort of bring up this concern that I feel it's not fair that others, organizations are able to do something in town, but what's the process? So as time is ticking to hold the fair that we're expecting to, you know, with our insurance, was going to be November twenty-second to December eighth. We were looking for a week, a couple of days to set up, a couple of days to come back. And it was just before and it's, you know, right in the time for the holidays. So I'm bringing it to you, to the concern of my first district representatives, that I'm not hearing anything, nothing's getting done. I have plans, I put together some ideas. I don't have a letter that was given to me since the Board of Selectmen. I have not heard it get approved. I haven't had a phone call. I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do if, if, if there's no communication back. So I bring it to here to see what you guys feel about the project. Why, I guess my biggest question is, what is holding up or why am I? I feel like I'm not the one to be allowed to use that building for the fair. And I think, I think there should be an answer. Is this going to be something that the town wants to get behind? Is all the representatives in this area and in this room that wants to help and look for my, you know, look for your support, for the leadership to do this? That's what I came to do. So, or it's going to be held in 2025, which is fine. I built a building in this town in thirty days when I first did my first store. And so this can get done, even if I have to be most of the vendors and fix it and put it together and make a great holiday fair for us in the town. So I am here tonight to sort of ask the questions, tell you kind of the timeline. And I'm grateful that Jamie and Angie and the other group is here. But I'm just bringing this to your concerns and if you have any questions or what I should do next is kind of where I'm coming from. And, and or if we don't want to do this idea, that's another, just tell me.
J.C., I'm not sure any of this is within the purview of the RTM. And I mean, I'm saying that I'm not sure. I don't know.
Sure.
How this would, where this would land in the RTM. The only thing I can tell you is to submit correspondence and we talk it over to find out if there's any reason or any way for the RTM or not to be part of this. But it's, you know, you've said, you've said what you wanted to say, but I don't know. And maybe others know, but I don't know that there's a vote for us at this stage.
I don't think I need the RTM to make it happen. I'm asking for you guys as representatives in our town to see what you can do to help me accomplish this. You as individuals.
Well, through you, Madam Moderator, the first selectman is sitting right here.
Wouldn't you love to get an answer?
Could we, could we ask the first selectman to update us on what this process may be? Or help explain how someone could go about doing what she's asking to do?
Mike. Do you want my seat? Come on. We haven't done this since 2016.
I just want to clarify a couple of statements that were made. I believe J.C. did come to me, to me a couple of years ago, expressed an interest in a business venture, a nonprofit venture that she was looking at and inquired about the future of Canoe Brook. At that time, I said, it is uncertain what the town will be using Canoe Brook or the, or if we'll divest of that property. I think even at that time, we may have been, the animal shelter may have still been utilizing as swing space. That was 2023, I believe, or when you came forward. Right. I had not heard anything. You know, at a previous Board of Selectmen's meeting, a couple of meetings ago, as we entered the meeting, the board was handed a, a letter in terms of this venture that she's undertaking as we came in. The board decided, what the directive was at that time was, put together a proposal and submit the proposal for consideration. Once again, you know, the, not having anything before us. We weren't going to act on it. That was the directive from the board. However, I will share and also for, you know, not only for your benefit, but the RTM, but also for the community benefit as well, that may be wondering what the future of Canoe Brook holds. I did, since that Board of Selectmen's meeting, have a conversation with Deputy Chief House. As you know, the police department will be undertaking a project that is expected to be a thirteen-month-plus project kicking off hopefully this November. Although they're not utilizing that for operational purposes, they requested to hold Canoe Brook for storage space for, so I, that will be the, for the next year plus, that will be serving as storage for the period. I think I answered.
Thank you.
Satisfied? I mean, I didn't, I know there's a lot there. Thank you.
Yes, Representative.
Thanks, Madam Moderator. Through you, a question?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if that you described setting up a nonprofit, so it has a 501(c)(3) status?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
Yes. Okay, so I mean, I, can I just say, I mean, I sort of got an answer. So it seems like we're going to put a different department in there for some storage. I mean, that at least gives me a solution to understanding what and why. I do have proposal and information, but I was never told, am I supposed to be giving it to the Board of Selectmen? Am I just giving it to Jamie? Those are the kinds of questions I'm not getting answers from. So that is sort of immaterial now because it seems like we have another purpose for the building at this time.
I have a question, Jamie. Is there a process in place for anybody to, anybody in the town and any kind of requirements to ask to use town buildings? The answer may be no, I just wondered if there one in place.
Short answer is probably, there's not a formal process other than directly bringing it to something that you would find that's codified or spelled out. Because really, the town doesn't have vacant buildings or space. I mean, quite honestly, I've heard from a number of organizations over the years that are all looking for space for different purposes. And we didn't, we don't have that space. Obviously, with the Canoe Brook building, that, that building is vacant, has been vacant. And then a year ago, when the Board of Education turned over the building to eleven-eleven Main Street, we do have that building as well. But as far as, so typically, there's not space that is vacant at this point that is available to organizations to utilize. I mean, as this board knows, because you approve, pass some lease agreements, there's, there are spaces, you know, old schools that nonprofits occupy, which are owned by the school, you know, Volunteer Service Center, Adult Orchard House, Branford Early Learning Center. Those are all town buildings, which are, but those are permanently occupied by organizations. And that would go through Board of Selectmen as well as RTM process for those encumbrances at lease of a property. So that is spelled out, but for, I think something for.
Not for short-term.
A one-day event or something.
Thank you.
So do you want me to bring these to your next board meeting or give them to Trista?
Well, we're not going to, I just stated.
You said you wanted me to provide you to them, so I.
Yeah, so at that meeting, when you came into the meeting.
No, you said after.
So at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, to be clear, the Board of Select, you presented, you came in at the beginning of the Board of Selectmen's meeting, presented the board through Trista a, a letter. The board, I believe, the directive from the board at that time was there was no actionable item. It was right up in our, a proposal of what you want to utilize this building and will take it under consideration. However, since that time, I had a conversation with the deputy chief, who then requested to reserve that building for the duration of the police department project for storage. So at this point, I don't think there's, you know, any.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you both. Mr. Twohill, grab something, yeah?
I do. Thank you, thank you, Madam Moderator. Just wanted to recognize two long-term employees that have just retired. First of all, we have the, right, the recent retirement of Dagmar Bach. She was the long-term, longtime director of the senior center. She started, she started when there was a room, right, in the community house, the Golden Age Room. And at that time, the director was Matt Brady. So she's been, she was there since the inception of the program, you know? And then also, also the, from the town clerk's office, also over forty years of mid- yester, just retired. And, you know, I mean, they were great over the years, so thank you for your service. And then I would request a moment of silence for Ellsworth McQuiggen, who passed away. He was chairman of planning and zoning for at least twenty years
Thank you, Mr. Twohill, for those remembrances.
You're welcome, Madam Moderator.
Any other business to come before the RTM this evening? Yes, Mr. Brooks.
Sorry, I know this, I should just let it go, but I can't, I just can't. So most of, most of all these items were transferred for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. So just sort of cleaning up. And I don't know if this is the end of it or not. I, I don't know. I guess we'll find out. But I just would like us to try to, I don't want to put any more RNOs play. But maybe we can have an informal sort of, you know, rule, if you will, and try to streamline these. This is money that's been spent and most, as, as we've learned from the reports, all of it was spent, well, whatever the word I know is exists, but.
Good word.
So, so I would just like to, you know, in the future, and if more come, you know, let's, let's try to just, maybe not two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars before four-one, but I would like to see us not bring in department heads and all of that into meetings for these transfers when, you know, this is, I mean, you got to, you're paying the money regardless. We've already spent the money. So I just want to kind of streamline these things. And if we can come up with maybe a way before next year to make everybody's life a little easier for this, I think that would be helpful for everybody involved. And then we did do a great thing tonight, make the town more efficient. And I just want to make that process a little more efficient, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Motion to adjourn.
Then I'll have, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I have several seconds. Okay, then the meeting is adjourned at nine-thirty-four. Good night, everyone.
You want to refer that to RNO?
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.